Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have the clerk call the roll and Counselor Bolin is out of town and Counselor Grisel is out also.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Scott?
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp?
We just checked and we weren't able to get ahold of him, but we still have a quorum with the four of us, so we'll still be able to continue. Had you heard anything from Counselor Reese Camp?
He said he'd be here and let something happen tomorrow.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on then with us four. Okay, approval of the city council minutes. You've had the city council minutes in your packet from the past two meetings, July 10th and July 17th, the regular session and the special session. Were there-- yes?
Mr. Mayor, I do have, for the official meeting record for the July 17th minutes, will reflect a correction on page one.
I'm sorry, it doesn't wait?
July 17th minutes, there'll be, it will reflect a correction on page one.
Okay.
The first sentence of the last paragraph should read cases, not causes. And it won't reflect that in your packets, but the official record will.
Okay. Are there any other corrections or additions to the minutes from those meetings?
I'm ready.
Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes from July 17th and the 10th as amended. Consent calendar. We have the City of Lebanon council agenda for tonight, August 14th, and the board minutes from the planning commission, June 19th, 2013. Is there any corrections or additions to those? We have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent calendar is passed. And we have a proclamation here, I have. Proclamation in recognition of September 2013 as Senior Center Month, whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing in their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better lives of younger generations. And whereas the Lebanon Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of the City of Lebanon. And whereas, through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of the City of Lebanon to contribute their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas, the Lebanon Senior Center affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skill, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Aziz, do hereby proclaim September 2013 National Senior Center Month and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. Dated 14th day of August 2013. And I'll be participating in that this month with the computer class that I'll be teaching over there at the Senior Center next week. Okay, this is an opportunity now for public comments, and we welcome all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council approaching the microphone, signing in, stating the name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond, and the city clerk will accept and distribute any written comments you might have at the speaker's request. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in public, from the public? What was that?
I'm here for you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, no comments, last call. Okay, we'll move on to item number one, the public hearing. And this is the time and the place set for the public hearing in the matter of planning file number 13-0624, an application by the City of Lebanon to amend the city's development code. This hearing is now open, and I need to ask the audience if there's any objections to the notice that was sent out in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict, or bias on any members of the council? Okay, and with that out of the way, and seeing no ex parte or conflicts, we'll move on to the staff report. Dean? Oh, I'm sorry, Walt.
That's okay. You're already thinking ahead, Mayor.
I don't have my glasses on.
Okay. He doesn't look as good as me, no. We have two public hearings tonight on amendments to our development code. The first one before you is on wind energy systems. Let me give you a little background on this. I believe I went to a conference, it was either in Cheyenne or Spearfish for the Western Planners, and the issue of having individual wind turbine systems came up. I presented that would fit with residential units. I presented this information to the planning commission, asked if they would be interested in adopting codes or regulations with regard to these systems for the city. We conducted, I want to say about three or four work sessions on this matter. And I think the conclusion was the idea of a subdivision with 50 homes and a windmill on top of each one was not thought to be a good idea. However, they recognized this as an energy alternative, and in this day and age, you know, a little extra power never hurts. So I'm balanced the planning commission-directed staff to create rules and regulations for establishing small wind energy systems or wind turbines on industrial property. And a couple of things I want to make sure is clear, we're not talking about putting together a wind farm. That's not it. It's really a small turbine that can be either attached to a building or placed on the ground that powers, provides energy for a building or maybe a particular machine. In fact, farmers use these, or ranchers use these throughout the 19th century for water pumps, if you will. So once before you, really, is just to allow these units in the industrial zone, but one other thing I want to stress is that they would be allowed only in conjunction with a pre-existing industrial use. In other words, someone could not just go out there and plant these, if you will, and set up a small miniature wind farm. That's not the intent here. In your packet, you have the adoption ordinance. Under Exhibit A is the specific language that would be here. Under Exhibit B are all the subject findings that would support these changes. I'd just like to briefly go through Exhibit A, if I may. We have an introductory provision, simply notes that these will be allowed only as a necessary use and only in the industrial zone. Anyone who uses one has to have at least one acre of land. Only one unit is allowed per parcel. And again, this prohibits the creation of, if you will, a wind farm. The system can be located anywhere in the property, including on a building. The capacity, we have a limit to capacity, so we're not creating large generating systems. These are designed for individual structures, if you will. We have a separation for the blade to the ground for safety measures, at least a 20-foot separation. The design, this is an interesting one. Without automatic braking, there is a certain possibility that these can actually generate power through the electric grid system, so having some sort of braking system is necessary. They must meet the noise requirements of the city. We have certain setback standards based on location adjacent to residential properties. The setbacks increase as the height of a structure increases. This one particular section defines how we measure the height of a wind turbine unit. We have other security measures to make sure people do not have access to the unit, and also evidence must be submitted that the structure can safely support a wind energy system. The planning commission conducted a hearing on this matter on July 17th, voted unanimously to recommend city council approval of the amendments to the development code. Again, I want to emphasize that these are not wind farm type of, or wind turbines. These are small units designed for a single user. They are limited solely to the industrial zone, and they must be a part of an existing facility, not a standalone type of unit. Based on this, there's the recommendation of the planning commission that the city council approve these amendments, and unless there are any questions, that does conclude the staff report.
Question Walt, on Exhibit A?
Yes, sir.
On Exhibit A, number I, the, it just ends within 12 feet of the adjacent, and there's nothing after that.
Oh.
Is it building?
Jason grade.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Any other questions, I'll be--
Yeah, I'm trying to think back, I believe I was present the first time this came up on the planning commission, and I'm trying to recall the exact conversation. As I recall, this is more of a preemptive type of an ordinance as opposed to response to specific requests. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. I know the planning commission spent a lot of time discussing, should we even bother? Has anyone even asked whether or not these systems could be installed? I think the fear was unless we have some regulations in place, this might create more of a problem after the fact instead of putting something together. I think we also discussed at the time is that the reality, in the Willamette Valley, you really don't have the wind systems that would probably make these economically viable at this time. Now, the technology may change, but right now, the only way to make these really work are putting way up in the sky, so to speak. And that doesn't make sense, again, for a residential area.
Funny, I had-- Other questions? Bob, did you have any? No. Okay, thank you, Walt. And at this point, we'll ask for the proponents. Anybody in favor of this that would like to speak? Has an opportunity to speak? Anybody opposed to this that would like to speak? Last chance? Okay, seeing none. We'll now close the public testimony. All further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff at this point. Any discussion from the council?
Nope. I think as usual, our planning commission has done a pretty thorough review.
Yeah, it was very well done and put together. It was easy to understand, and it makes sense that we do this proactively. Okay, call for a motion?
Read the bill title first. Don't we usually read the bill title first?
Yeah. We actually do normally, and it was a different script today, but I'm not sure that it matters, but we can go ahead and read the ordinance. A bill for an ordinance amending the City of Lebanon Development Code Wind Energy Systems, Ordinance Bill Number 2013-4, Ordinance Number 2845.
Now a call for a motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the file number 13-0624. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Now I don't have to have you read that. The hearing is now closed. Wish to thank everyone for attending. Move on to the second hearing. And now's the time and the place for a public hearing in the matter of planning file 13-06-25, an application by the City of Lebanon to amend the city's development code. This hearing is now open. I need to ask the audience if there's any objections to the notice that was sent out in this case or the jurisdiction to this body and consider this case. Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council? With that out of the way, we're ready for the staff report. Walt, again.
Thank you again, Mayor, as opposed to Dean. Okay. I could probably sum up this in probably one sentence here. The changes before you legitimize what's already out there, people parking RVs on their driveways. Out of all the code amendments I've gone through since the adoption of the code in 2008, I've had more phone calls on this one than anyone. And everyone asking, does this restrict things? And going, no, the changes are designed to reflect what actually is occurring out there. And frankly, it's going to make enforcement a lot easier, which will make Kevin a lot happier. Essentially why we looked at was the issue of where people park their RVs. And I think the current language was a little inconclusive whether or not you could park it on the driveway. I think when we drive through neighborhoods, we see this on a day-to-day basis. So with that in mind, working with the planning commission, we looked at some changes to our parking requirements are basically within the residential zones. We're looking at two series of amendments here. One of them is under Section 1614.040a. And again, like the prior document, you have a ordinance for adoption, you have an Exhibit A that talks about the specific language, and also Exhibit B reviews the specific findings in support. Essentially, there are no major changes to the beginning items, one and two. In fact, those remain the same. Item three, under the Section 1614.040a, this was simply changed to prohibit parking in all required front and street-side yards. That's a safety measure to ensure that people can see when they're backing up or if you're on a street corner. Otherwise, it makes it very clear that you can park an RV on the driveway. We just want to make sure that's there. We also change, excuse me, let me back up a little bit. Basically, that's just to ensure that the driveway is the only place where you can park within the required front yard. The second item, under item four, simply allows the storage of an RV on the driveway. We want to make sure that is really clear. The only thing that it restricts is that you cannot eliminate required off-street parking. So every single family home in the city has to have two off-street parking spaces. We also include the garage. Your typical new home has two spaces in the garage. I recognize they get filled up, but they have two in the garage and two on the driveway. You're more than welcome to use one of the spaces on the driveway to store your boat or RV. We're just making that very clear with these changes. We added one more section to this to simply emphasize that industrial parking and commercial parking cannot be used for storage unless it's part of an approved RV storage facility. This is, again, to support other sections within our code. We made one other change in the code, and that's to Section 1614.020m. Currently, our code has a both minimum and maximum standard for parking. For example, if you have a requirement to put in 100 parking spaces for, say, a commercial development, you can have no more than 130. We have a 30 percent maximum. However, this applies across the board to all parking, so if you were to apply that standard to a single-family home, they can have no more than 2.6 spaces. And again, the new typical standard home has a couple in the garage and a couple on the driveway. So I must confess that most of the single-family homes we've been signing off the last few years, or since this code has been adopted, have probably been illegal with regard to parking because they exceeded that 30 percent limit. All that this change really does is to simply say for single-family homes and duplexes, that 30 percent limit does not apply. The, again, the planning commission reviewed this at their July 17 meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend council approval of the changes. And again, I want to emphasize on the whole, the primary purpose of this, of these regulations is to ensure property owners may store and park their RVs on their private property, including the use of their driveway. And with that, that is the end of the staff report. We have to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Questions?
No questions, but just comment, this is the kind of common sense amendment I like to see, it makes perfect sense, as far as I can tell.
Good year.
What did you say was the average amount of parking spaces on the newer homes that have been approved recently?
Basically, the current single-family home generally has a two-car garage with two parking spaces on the driveway right in front. So that, based on our view, is for parking spaces. If you were to strictly interpret the code as it's currently written, some of those spaces would have to go, which doesn't make sense at all. How about if a fifth-wheeler or an RV is sitting in the street, how long is that able to stay there before they have to move it? We have separate municipal code regulations with regard to parking in the street, and I think the chief could probably answer most of that. This just refers to parking on private property within the driveway. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Mayor.
And at this point, we'll ask for anybody that is for this legislation, proponents? Any testimony for? And is there anybody that opposes this that would like to speak? Last chance? Okay. At this point, we'll now close the public testimony. All further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff. Any questions or discussion? Pretty straightforward. And will the city attorney please read the ordinance?
A bill for an ordinance amending the City of Lebanon Development Code Residential Parking, Ordinance Bill Number 2013-5, Ordinance Number 2846.
Move for approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the planning file number 13-06-25. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Number three, Water Treatment Plant Consultant Contract Upgrade-- Upgrade-- Update by Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We're here before you tonight to kind of give you an update in the process of where we're at with the water treatment plant, what we're looking at as far as consultant design and the process that we've gotten to where we are coming to you and maybe heading down the path to put a contract together for the design of the water treatment plant. So basically, we're going to give you a little bit of background on how we got here and also what we've been doing for the last three months as far as getting ready for this, and also hopefully get a consensus from the council to move forward with negotiating a contract with the highest-scoring firm. So first, in the process, let me give you a little bit of background. In March, we put out an RFP, Request for Proposals, to four firms. We invited four firms, qualified firms, to supply us with an RFP, or basically a proposal, to design the water treatment plant, as well as, part of that included a tour of a plant that they had done. And I should say that probably started a lot longer than March of 2013. We actually started the process a couple of years ago with these four different firms, looking at their plants and visiting with them, and, you know, they've got a lot of knowledge, and so we were trying to obtain as much as we could from them. So basically, we requested that, or invited them to propose on the plant. ORS 279-C110 indicates that we are to select a firm where we determine that the contract price is going to be over $250,000 based on qualifications only. There's no price that's attached to that, and qualifications, past experience, and such. And that's the process that we followed. So basically, the process to determine the most qualified firm was twofold. We had the proposal, which was one part. The entire scoring was based on 100 points. The proposal was worth 50 points. Basically, that included references, past experience, what staff they were bringing to Bear on Lebanon's project. And that was scored by four of the staff members, myself, Jason Williams, Mike Trippett, and also Rob Emmons. Then after that, we attached with this, which was also worth 50 points, a tour, a site tour of the consultants' choice, where we got to go visit their work, look at what they've done, and then also interview the owners and the operators of the plants where they took us. So we went through that process. That's basically the process that we went to get to. We scored it individually, and then from there, we put an average score together. And out of the four qualified firms, Corolla Engineering scored the highest, was also the first pick of three of us on the committee. I should also state that I had an independent engineer look at this, and also came up with Corolla Engineering as the highest-scoring firm based on just the proposal. So the status, where we're at now, what we're proposing to do, as ORS 279 indicates, we're proposing to begin negotiating a contract with Corolla Engineering, at which point we would ask the council to approve the contract based on staff review, obviously, and a statement of work, and moving on down that path. So I guess we're kind of looking for a consensus from council. I'd like to answer any questions that anybody has regarding that, the process, or what we should do from here.
Ron, this is, the whole concept of large consulting, our engineering projects is, contracts is new to me in terms of the requirement by ORS that these be based on qualifications as opposed to competitive bid.
Correct.
How do we get an assurance that we're getting a competitive price out of this contract?
Well, when you say competitive price, I think they're all going to be competitive. In my experience with all the RFPs that we've done, and they've ranged anywhere from $25,000 to $350,000 to half a million. And comparing prices, you know, there's obviously differences, but those differences lay in the statement of work that each consultant does. You know, one firm might have an idea here where they can do it this way, and it doesn't take as many hours. So I think really what that comes down to is staff working really close with the consultant to develop a statement of work that, you know, fits what we are going to do out there, and then assign hours to that. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're going to have to make that decision, whether that's, you know, whether we're getting a good price or not. I can't tell you what that magic number is. You know, from there, it's not competitive bid, so--
No, I hear that. That's what I'm curious--
So that's the hard part. My feeling is that any of the four firms that were selected, in my 19 years of doing this, none of these firms would stay in business if they were gouging people. They're all reputable firms. If they're coming in and doing that, that word gets out because at the end of the day, we know what they charged, and we also know what the project's worth, and, you know, you should be in a certain range. You know, what's that range? Probably 17, 22, somewhere in there. So we don't have a price. Yes, sir.
I wanted to know, what did you guys feel, those of you who did the evaluation, that made them the most qualified over the other candidates? What were some of the key things that you found?
Well, I mean, they've got a vast experience. They put together a really great proposal, you know, without getting into too many of the details. If we wanted to get into details of each of the different firms, I would recommend that we do that in an exact session, so that we're not, I think I kind of attribute it to, like, hiring people. You know, I don't, we as staff took these four firms and pretty much picked them apart, you know? I mean, they're all very qualified, and it's hard to, I prefer not to get into all the negative details, but with Corolla, you know, their site tour was great, their interview with the owner and operators was fantastic. You call their references, the people are excited about them. You know, and that's, all four of us had that same feel. That's not to say that any of the other firms weren't capable or qualified, it's just we had to make a decision. I think we put probably close to 600 or 700 man-hours into this. So I feel pretty confident in what we've done. None of us, you know, I've pulled our panel, and none of us would change that decision. We all had that same feeling, you know? And it is, it's subjective, I'll give you that. There is no real hard fast. But if you look at the way we scored things, we tried to be fair in how we scored. We all didn't score the same way, but we scored each proposal individually the same way, which in the average, I believe that that's how, that turned that out.
Are they located Oregon?
Yes, Portland. Yes.
Ron, you've made the comment that everyone was qualified to do the project.
Correct.
And ORS has been implemented to, as statute demands a certain thing, certain items to be followed. to be followed.
Correct.
And based on, I guess, my feelings that we have a qualified local firm, and there's two other qualified firms besides the high-scoring firm, I would suggest that we ask staff to negotiate a price with all four of those and come back to us with that number.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how much difference we had. I mean, like I say, if all four firms are qualified, what's the end-product difference? Because one guy's got a little better qualification.
Right. You know, I can throw...
There are a number of things that probably every one of those firms brings, or is lacking to bring, but the emphasis that is strong in my mind, because we want to do as much as we can with local business people. Let's see what the bids are from all four, and we have staff bring them back to us, and we take the next step.
Does the statute require that contracts be awarded to those in terms of be the most qualified, or qualified, I mean, when it says based on qualifications, I'm not sure how to interpret that.
I know that it's been interpreted as the most qualified within the people that are put in the RFPs, and that's how I read it.
Okay, so the most qualified is the de facto standard, what we're seeing?
Yes.
And as I understand, talking to an engineer friend of mine in McMinnville, the statute and the scoring can be so skewed based on size. I mean, you take a firm like CH2M Hill that has worldwide offices, they have, they meet all the employment issues in terms of women, minorities, and those kind of things, whereas a small firm in Sweet Home or Lebanon, Oregon, or even sometimes cities the size of Albany would not have those kind of staff people on staff. They would be hired as consultants from other firms, which...
Yet their engineering capabilities are probably just as good.
Just as good.
Are we nullifying this process if we're mixing two things?
Yes.
You know, I was going to jump, I've been through this in four different Oregon cities, and nobody likes the statute, but I would make the observation, listening to four different attorneys in each of those cities, that to go out and direct staff to negotiate a price with four different firms is circumventing the intent of the statute. The intent of the statute is make a selection based upon qualifications, knowing that it's subjective, no matter how talented your people are that are doing the review, and then negotiate with that top-ranked firm, which is what we've done. So I certainly don't want to ask city staff to go out and try to negotiate for contracts when that clearly circumvents the intent of the statute on how we're supposed to proceed.
We used a process similar to this when we built the library and police station, if I'm not mistaken. We didn't go out for a low bid. We negotiated with a contractor, we're confident that they could do the work to the degree and quality that we chose, and then proceeded.
Architects do have a similar qualification-based process for large projects, that's correct.
Well, John, the ORS statute circumvents us getting a number from those qualified, in your opinion?
It does. Otherwise, we would be allowed to consider, it would be much more straightforward to have price being considered along with qualifications, past experience, similar projects. But it specifically lays out making a selection first based upon the qualifications.
So we as a council, in looking to be good stewards of our money for the citizens, then don't have a say in what that number really is?
You do at the point that staff comes back, and your staff, frankly, not just your staff, but in other cities, they know what the market is doing, and they have a very good sense of when a statement of work isn't consistent with a price that's being asked. And I think Ron and the engineering staff involved will come in and say, first of all, they'll say to the number-one-ranked firm, "You're not giving us a fair quote for the work that you're going to do, and we're moving on, we're recommending to council to move on number two." That will be a very straightforward conversation that city staff have with firms that don't meet our expectations on fair work for fair price.
The problem I have with this process, and I clearly understand that, you know, we can't buck the legislature in Salem, but nonetheless, by putting a council such as this in the position of simply negotiating with an effectively mandated choice, and what we're really stuck with is using what you've described as, you know, historical market precedence for pricing. And what that means is that prices can never go down. They can only go up. And so you're just stuck in this spiral of increasing cost because the Joneses' next county overdid it. And, you know, there's no room for this firm to have done this 12 times and gotten really good at, and their time is 30% of what it was the first time, and we've really got some efficiencies of scale and ability now, and that we can pass on to the citizen, can't happen. Because they can just simply say, "Well, here's the last six, and everyone's, you know, we're in the game, and costs keep going up." So we really don't have a position to negotiate from.
I would say that it is very hard for smaller firms to break into the market under the statutes that exist. But having said that, I would also not want to speak against the talent and the good works that the firms that do get work through this process do for communities.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm no way suggesting that. I'm just saying they have a negotiating position that's insurmountable.
I would disagree with that. I think as staff, as staff, we can look at that, and we can cut hours back. The reality is, is the work is the work.
They know they're going to get the work. I mean, where's their incentive to negotiate? They can say, "We don't want to cut them back. We don't think we can." You know, and all you've got is their judgment.
That's what you're paying for in a professional services contract. I mean, I don't, this is the ORS.
We don't know what the value of this is. Am I missing something?
Well, Counselor, I think the specific language that in the statute, I think that, you know, in all fairness to the statute, that, you know, you can either like or dislike. You know, the Section 5, which says, you know, "The price must be reasonable and fair to the contracting agency as determined solely by the contracted agency." And so I think that through the professional services, professional engineers that we have, that we give them, that you as a council give them the authority to negotiate this on behalf of the city, and to get a fair and reasonable price on behalf of the contracted agency, which is the City of Lebanon, is where they protect the interest of the people and protect the interest of this council.
Yeah, that would be interesting to, I mean, I've got a lot of thoughts going through my head that probably aren't even germane for this particular meeting, but...
You know, and I don't have a doubt at all that our staff will do a good job for us as council in the city.
Yeah, I'm not going to say either.
It's just the position that puts not only them, but we as counselors, in our ability to have a qualified consultant, or a contractor, or whatever, at a lesser price than the...
It makes me feel like nothing more than a rubber stamp written here. I mean, I'm just told, "This is what you got to do, do it."
I mean, I think you look at it, you know, I completely understand. I've read this statute backwards and forwards. I've read the OARs. I've looked at it. Tried to even look at some of the legislative history of it. I mean, the bottom line is, is the statute says what it says. If the same requirements were there for you guys to select a city attorney, I wouldn't be city attorney. I mean, obviously. I mean, because at the time, I wasn't the most experienced and probably didn't have the best RFP. But at the same time, you know, unless we're going to, somebody's going to go up there and work with the legislator on changing the statute, I don't disagree with what it makes you feel as a counselor as to what your options are when it comes to these types of situations.
Well, I think that, the way I perceive this, is there are certain, it's not like a piece of road that is a mile long and so wide. It's a fairly complex building, as was the police station and the library. And if you went with low bid, you're looking at just a dollar value, and even then for something that isn't even designed yet. So there was a feeling, I think, if I recall, that certain firms may be more intuitive to that design, or the needs of the city, or have maybe a better history or working relationship with an organism, and so it's worthwhile pursuing something like this that doesn't put the lowest dollar first. It puts a relationship or a trust in the finished conception of a, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but the library could have looked at any number of things, so the police station was the same way. So there were compelling arguments that, of all the times for my phone to ring... Yeah, at least it's not noisy. But we felt that there was a reason not just to look at the lowest dollars, and I think that's the option here. It's a way to, you lose something from that, but you might gain something from it, too.
We're talking about a consulting firm that's going to monitor and supervise the process of this water treatment plant from beginning to end. Am I not correct, Ron?
Correct.
So they're not designing it, they're not building it, they're...
Well, they're designing it.
Oh, they will be designing it.
It is. It's a design contract.
Design contract. Yeah. So those firms that are perceived to be qualified, I guess, have a way through contracting or consultants to, no matter what their size, from large to small, to make that happen through this negotiated fee that they're going to be paid. Some firms are big enough that they have all this in-house.
Right. I think, like I said earlier, these firms wouldn't stay in business if you got an unfair price. Is one going to be cheaper than the other? Most likely. I mean, they don't look at each other and go, "Well, you charge this, and we'll stay together." But what they do get, when the next company, and it's the same thing, we checked on references, "How was your engineering? You know, what was the prices like? You know, were you, was it competitive? You know?" And the answers we got were yes. If they were to overcharge us, we would know that. We may not know it upfront, because we don't know a price of the project. But where we would know it is on the back end, and that would be our reference to the next guy. So what I'm saying is, the references that we got, they didn't reflect anybody overcharging or trying to gouge. These guys are professionals, all of them, and that's, obviously, they're here to make money, and they should make money, but in the same sense, I don't think they're out there trying to gouge the City of Lebanon, any of the four of them. But they are going to be different priced, I'll give you that.
I'm kind of sensing, and maybe it's just me, but I know I feel this way, I'm feeling like, and I trust you guys, obviously, in what you guys are doing and in this decision process, but I also feel like I would like to know more about what the process was and how it went, and which firms were why, and if we can't discuss that in a public meeting, it has to be an executive session. I've talked to the city attorney. I don't know if we can discuss that in an executive session. But I would like to know, and I don't know about the counselors, more about how the process went, and who was number one, two, three, four, and because as counselors, as the council making a decision that is really a critical decision, and without that information, I don't feel like we can make a right decision. I don't, that's my feeling.
Well, I think we're kind of required to go by the ORS on this. We've got to follow the guidelines.
But it doesn't mean that we couldn't have the information. But, you know, the statement you made, right up front, I agree with completely, and that is that I don't lack any confidence in our staff. In other words, I don't have any sense that if we did sit at the table and go through the process they went through, that we'd come up with anything different than they. So I'm not questioning your conclusion at all.
I don't take it as that either. That's okay.
No, I'm not in any way saying that. And so I don't know that, for myself, I'd have, there'd be a lot of value in going through that. The kind of thing going through my mind, like I say, this may be over the top for this conversation, but my experience with large national or international consulting firms, I used to work for one, that are, you know, doing exactly this, you know, billing by labor hours and estimating what we're going to do, there is an enormous, an enormous variation in efficiency from one particular project team and the next, doing the same kind of work, depending on how particularly skilled the particular staff are. You can, because what these firms are going to do is they're going to generally take junior staff and assign them to do a lot of work and be supervised by senior staff, just how large consulting firms operate, and, which is legitimate, but my question is, is there any mechanism at all for evaluating, as these projects progress, how well they're using their staff? Because that's the only mechanism we've got to look at this. You know, because I, you know, I'm talking about audits, you know, and audits of, you know, I'm talking, you know, general motor size companies, you know, they're big deals. And, you know, I've seen audits, you know, run 50% of the hours that the next team would do, the same firm, just, and really take that much time just because of how well they were managed. And, you know, it has nothing to do with the skill of the individuals per se, it's just, or the firm itself. And so, like I say, that's a big subject, and, you know, like I say, I have some ideas on that, but...
I mean, cities typically, part of the RFP process is to get real specific about which engineers are going to be working on the project, so we can get a sense that we're going to have the senior engineers with the types of skills and experiences that Floyd mentioned that are going to be working on our project. If you want to spend more time on this, I would suggest that you're probably talking about a work session. I agree with Trey, if that's what you said. He indicated that it couldn't be an executive session. I don't know how you could get it into executive session, but certainly, city staff could walk through how we got to the recommendation that's in your packet. I will say that we're going to come to the same place, because none of you are engineers that have the experience with the market or the firms to suggest that there's a different next step to this.
I'm not suggesting anything in terms of the recommendation here tonight. I don't see there's probably any realistic opportunity to change that, because that's probably been done very well. I believe my experience with staff and everything I've experienced so far leads me to believe that I can rely on that recommendation. The only comments I'm making are, you know, it might be interesting to look into how we do the negotiations on the price, and, you know, that conversation might be interesting to participate in somewhere. As far as this recommendation, I don't know that I have any real questions, given the hand we're dealt.
They assigned staff to this. We got to meet the team. We were with the team. They've given the amount of time that each staff member is going to be on the project. You know, can I, you know, we made them guarantee that in their proposal. Is it guaranteed that that's going to happen when they're in their office? No, probably not. But it's the same thing that happens in our office. We have our junior staff doing a lot of our design, and we review it. I mean, it's pretty typical.
Well, you know, I'm probably at a stage where I could probably go ahead and make a vote on this particular recommendation myself, but I'd, you know, maybe like to just visit with you privately on some other ideas, just for conversation's sake.
Sure. And really, all we're looking for tonight is a consensus on which direction you want us to head. What I didn't want to do was start negotiations with a firm, because it'll probably take us three or four days to develop a statement of work on a project this big, and that's everybody's time and money. So I wanted to make sure we were headed in the right direction before we go there.
I'd like to talk to you about that, before we get into too deep with that conversation.
You know, I appreciate that, too. What concerned me a little bit, Counselor, was the notion of inserting, and maybe didn't mean it this way, and I just heard it this way, but inserting you as a policy perspective at a seat at the table when the actual negotiations are taking place.
I'm not talking about that at all. I'm talking about having a conversation with Ron, just for some sharing.
It was before that, that I was, I heard you say you think where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, is in the actual negotiations with the firm, and that may be a place for...
I do think that's where a key piece of this is involved. I think that should be staff done.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Thank you.
No, I'm not suggesting we do that here.
Very good.
Wayne, what's your feeling on the direction?
Well, I think our hands are tied. Basically, the small engineering firm, no matter where they're at, the ORS in the state of Oregon is the, you know, the big boys have lobbied and got this ORS passed, and so the small businessman is shut out, period.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right, and but...
You know...
It's another case of where, you know, the layers of bureaucracy are such that we can't move.
It's just...
We're confronted with that on a regular basis.
You know, we, as counselors, present and past, have been beat up over the fact that we cannot seem to get work for local firms, businesses in Lebanon, Oregon, and sometimes Lynn County. And I'm trying to understand why that can't happen. And usually, it's a bid process that they weren't the low bidder. And in this case, it's an ORS that is causing them to not have a high enough score based on the content of the ORS to compete. So again, we bring in a big firm that's going to cost us a million, the plant, many millions, and they leave really nothing in this community.
Maybe I can address a little bit of your concerns, Counselor Ruskamp. I've had several discussions with Corolla Engineering. Their intent, they recognize the fact that local is... And they agree with the engineering should come, some of it from local. I mean, these guys are experienced. My belief is that during this part, they're going to be looking for local engineers to help with some of the stuff that they don't do. In fact, they've already started that process. When they put their proposal together, they were looking for local engineers down here. Darren Crawford, Crawford Surveying is their surveyor. That's their proposed surveyor. So he's a part of their team. And they don't do the civil portion of this, which is fairly substantial. So they're going to be looking for civil engineers as well. And that's something that we haven't gotten into the details yet, because we... It's really hard to get into those details until you know which direction you're going. And that's really what we're here to do tonight. There's nothing that says that we can't try and negotiate out... I don't want to dictate what they do, because essentially, they're going to be the heart of this thing. But that doesn't mean that they're not going to use local contractors, local consultants. I've had several conversations with Wayne Gresh, our project manager, who would be our project manager. And, you know, we're brainstorming, packaging things up so it's smaller, and so that local firms, local contractors get some of that work. They recognize that fact. And I think they, you know, they would be on board with that. However, we can't dictate that. There's no guarantees of that.
Yeah, we hear that from, you know, past large contractors that come in, "Oh yeah, we're going to use local contractors and engineers." But very seldom does it happen. We can't control that, though, once they have a contract.
Yeah, I think they've made a pretty good attempt already, you know? So...
So the civil component of that, Ron, is what I hear you saying can be separate? Or it's within the...
Corolla Engineering doesn't do the civil piece. That's not their... They're the heart of the operation. They basically designed the water treatment plant. So the roads, the site work, the drainage, the water lines that connect it, the sanitary sewer line that'll obviously have to be put in, you know, site fencing, landscaping, all that stuff. You know, that's got potential to be pulled out. And we've talked about maybe...
I wasn't aware of that, but that's helpful.
Yeah. Making... And I think they would like to see local firms do that. I don't feel that I am in a position to dictate that, whether they can... I don't want to pick and choose who they use, but I've had them tell me that. So I don't want to be in a position where I say, "You shall use this one and this one." I don't think that's fair, and I think that's where they need to go.
And I think that's an important distinction to make here, is at the end of the day, we want a contract with one firm that we hold responsible for 100% of the work product versus starting to carve this off into different pieces, so...
Then you get...
Exactly. Wayne, that's exactly right. So we hope that the scenario that Ron just described happens, but at the end of the day, we're going to have a contract with responsibility and accountability with the firm, with one firm.
Well, and the lion's share of this project, which will be the actual construction of the facility, will be open for some kind of a bidding process.
Oh, absolutely. You know, and we'll come back. There'll be multiple times that I'll come back and visit you with updates on it. There's a lot of new inventive ways to bid out stuff. Some of it will be broken out, you know? We'll get a civil contractor to do some of the civil work, or, you know? I mean, there's different things we can do to make that happen.
Yes, I agree that we need to try to carve off all that we can for people locally. Although, anything that goes out for a bid per se, and we use the lowest bid format, will go, if it's a Portland bid or a whatever, it's going to slice that one.
But it also... By doing that, it also gives our local contractors, you know, an opportunity to bid that. They're able to bond for that. They're able to do some of that work. So it does give them that opportunity. On a low bid, it is what it is. I mean, you know? So...
You know, it's just sad that the larger firms don't really see the importance of... I'm sure they do see it. I shouldn't say that. They're aware. They're professional people that, you know, the local business, no matter how small or how big, are making donations to nonprofits, the Boys and Girls Clubs, and they're putting things in parks. And I don't see these firms that are coming in, doing these major projects for us, doing that.
Yeah, I mean, there's...
I mean, it's not much we can say on that.
I know there isn't, but...
Well, one of the qualifications that I think, you know, we're talking about based on qualifications, but I don't see a definition of what constitutes qualifications. But, you know, I think the assumption is it's experience doing this kind of work, but...
There was a lot of different things that went into that.
But my question would be, are there criteria in that list of qualifications that include how effectively they use their staff and their time?
Absolutely.
And so I would, you know...
Who did you assign to it? What's their references? How many projects like this have they worked on? How much time are you going to have them accounted to the project? I mean, we went through a ton of it.
Well, no, my question is not just which people are used or being used, but, you know, how effective are these guys doing this kind of task compared to the other firm? Can we do it in 75% of the time that the average firm does it? Or, you know, are there any kind of things like that that are ever looked at?
I mean, you are going to get some boilerplate stuff that's going to carry over from other projects, you know? But in the same sense, we're going to be different as well, you know? I mean, it's a green field. You know, we're pretty lucky in the site that we have. I think, you know, that that's going to help us in our costs. They don't have to work around an existing plant, so...
You know, my memory serves me correctly, when Mr. Greisik was sort of informing the council and making a presentation about the RFP back some months ago. I distinctly remember him saying that that RFP was going to read something in the way of an emphasis on local contractors.
And we had a portion of it that was tied to that. I believe 15 points was tied to location and staff that you were assigning to it. So we did take that into account. But we had to... We had a whole lot of stuff to score on, and people lost points because they were over here and over here. And yes, location did help there. But the heart of it is the technical, you know, the technical proposal and what we saw there. And that's not to say that any of the firms couldn't do the job. I don't want to give that impression at all. We were tasked with coming up with the highest-scoring firm, which means you're counting hairs on a gnat's wing. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. And we did it individually, you know? And obviously, we talked during the tours, but our scores came out individually, and that's where it landed. I feel like we did it legitimately and very ethically.
Well, it does... Go ahead. You can say something.
It's my understanding that we also made some changes to meet some criteria that one of the firms didn't meet within the original criteria.
Correct. We did an addendum to extend the travel, period, so that we could go tour plants that they wanted to show us, that were further away. Yes, we could do that. That's pretty typical. If they want to show off their showpiece plant, that was the whirlwind tour that we took.
Okay. With all that said, what's the feeling of the council at this point to move forward with this? More discussion?
I don't see any choice.
I'm comfortable with that.
Wayne?
I'm not happy at all, but I think we should move forward.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Our direction is to move forward.
And we will do what we can for you. Thank you.
With negotiations, correct?
Yes. And we'll try and bring something back in August. Oh, it is August. September or possibly October, depending on how everything goes, if we can get it all put together.
Thank you, Ron, for your time.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is peer court presentation and intergovernmental agreement by Jessica Meyer, City Attorney.
Try to get me to join in up there. Oh, I see my name.
Yeah, your name's up here.
Oh, man, I'm sorry, I didn't do that. I'm grateful for the opportunity to come and talk today about peer court. I think I know everyone on the council, but just in case you need a refresher, I am Jessie Meyer. I am an attorney at the city attorney's office. I've worked at the firm since 2006, and most of that time, I've been prosecuting the misdemeanor crimes that occur within the city limits. And that's my main job as city attorney, and so I don't get to deal with the council as much as Trey does, but I appreciate everything you do. Sorry, Meyer.
Thank you.
Not as loud as Trey, either, so... In conjunction with the Lynn County Juvenile Department, Captain Burrows and Deila Johnson and I have had... I've been putting together a peer court for the city of Lebanon. And if you don't know what a peer court is, essentially, it's a... We would cover juvenile offenders, probably first-time and maybe second-time offenders who have committed a crime and who attend the schools here in Lebanon. The crimes, I think you have in your packets, the proposed intergovernmental agreement. There's an exhibit on there that goes over the proposed crimes that we would cover in peer court. There are misdemeanor crimes and violations. Some of the violations would be MIP tobacco, MIP alcohol, and the misdemeanor crimes would range up to an assault, four. All of the crimes that we would handle in peer court would be referred to us by the Lynn County Juvenile Department. Their procedure is essentially that you have a juvenile, he commits, he or she commits a crime, they are cited into the juvenile system, and those juvenile represent... Juvenile courts and juvenile department representatives would evaluate the case and see if it is a good case for our peer court. They would review the matter, too, here in our peer court. We would have the offender essentially enter a plea of guilty to the crime and submit themselves to the jurisdiction of our peer court. And they would come in and really have what's essentially a trial on their crime. The great thing about peer court is, it's not the typical kind of court. The judge would be me, and I think I was chosen, Captain Burrows will admit this, because I kind of look like a peer to a juvenile. But the jury is a jury of the juvenile's peers. So our jury members would be volunteers from the high school who would come in, and they would evaluate what the juvenile has done, and they would sentence them to do certain things. Some of those things would be, we have a homework packet that Captain Burrows has put together with the help of some other peer courts that we have attended, that goes over certain things about the crime they committed and other crimes. Some of the questions are, are you surprised that the maximum penalty for criminal mischief in the second degree is one year in jail and a fine of $6,250? I think they would be surprised if that's the maximum penalty for that kind of a crime. Other things they would do, community service, they would need to attend certain classes, potentially, that are offered in Albany and in Lebanon, anger management classes, alcohol awareness classes, consumer classes. And we have a consumer awareness class that we sentence people to, often in our municipal court, that teaches people about why shoplifting is bad. So those types of things would be what these juvenile offenders would be sentenced to by a jury of their peers, with me as judge overseeing that they're not that off the hook too easily or too harshly. So the other great thing about peer court is, and I think the main reason why we're doing it, is the juvenile system is really swamped. And a lot of these crimes and violations really don't get the attention that they need, specifically the MIP alcohol and MIP tobacco and some of the more... The less serious misdemeanor offenses. There just isn't enough in resources with the juvenile department to really punish these juveniles. Sometimes they get a letter, you know, "Dear juvenile, don't do it again. Love, the juvenile department." Because that's... And, you know, I'm not saying that the juvenile department isn't doing their job, they're just doing what they can do. And my feeling, and I know the feeling of Captain Burrows and Deila and the juvenile department, is if we can try and nip some of these things in the bud and have their peers of these juvenile offenders tell them, "That wasn't cool, what you did, and you need to pay for what you did, and here's some things that you can do to try and learn about the repercussions of these crimes that you commit," whether it's, you know, stealing gum from Safeway, or breaking a window at a business, or maybe even harassing someone else in town. We want to make sure that the juveniles are getting the attention that they need when they're first starting to commit these crimes, so that we don't end up seeing them in our municipal court or in circuit court, you know, when they are adults committing more serious crimes and getting out of control. We had the opportunity, I know you guys have heard a lot, so I'll try and keep it short, but we had the opportunity, Captain Burrows and I and Deila, to go up and witness Kaiser's peer court. And it was really eye-opening, and I was really impressed with the jury members, these high school girls and boys who would come and conduct themselves in a really professional manner. And part of the things they had to do as jurors is, they were each required to ask two questions of the offender. And they had a list of questions to kind of help them out, and some of the questions were, you know, "Why did you do it?" And "What did your mom say, you know, when she found out?" And, you know, it was really interesting to see how the juvenile reacted. I think it was a really good therapeutic conversation that they were having about the bad thing that they did and, you know, reasons why they probably shouldn't do it again. And to have their peers say, you know, and try and, you know, explain that to them as well, like, "That wasn't cool, what you did." The crime that we witnessed was a young girl, and she had, with some peer pressure, I think, gone mudding in a local park, and it ripped up the grass. I think she was really sorry at the end. I think she really... You know, her mom came with her, and that will be a requirement of our peer court as well, that a parent comes and listens to what happened. And, you know, part of the peer court was that she had to turn to her mom and say, "Sorry, Mom, you know, I realize this affected you, and I feel really sorry about what I did." And the mom, you know, "Thank you, daughter." And I don't think that's happening in a lot of these juveniles' homes, so peer court would allow that to happen, and we'd make sure that that did happen. So I'm sure I'm missing a lot of things, and... But if you have any questions, the intergovernmental agreement is required so that we have that cooperation with... agreement is required so that we have that cooperation with Lynn County Juvenile Department to get those referrals over to us. And of course, if they don't meet the requirements of what the peer court orders them to do, they're right back to the juvenile department. And we've had several meetings with members of staff at juvenile department. They're super excited about this program and they're so grateful that we're taking it on and want to help them, you know, get to, you know, get some, some not punishment, but really punishment for the individuals who are committing these juvenile crimes. And I think the best part about it, unlike maybe other things we've discussed previous, is this is free to the city. It's run by volunteers and I will be one of them. And the only fine or money that will be collected is a small fine from the offender, $50, I think, for the highest, highest types of crimes. And that will really go to pay for the pizza and the soda that we feed the jurors. So we're excited about it and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are these peer courts, they're clearly things that are being done around the country various places?
Yes, yeah, there's actually, yeah.
Any data on how effective they are over time?
You know what, I, there probably is. I don't have it with me. I know part of the intergovernmental agreement requires us to, on a quarterly basis, report back to the juvenile department with our success rate. And from the administratives we've talked to and in the different peer courts that we visited and talked with, they, you know, the reoffense rate is really low, is really low.
Okay, one, yeah.
Yeah. So I wish I had the actual data, I'd take my word for it.
So Jessica, what, I know you have one day a month for a three-hour period, I believe?
I think it's-
One evening, one evening?
Yeah, and I think, right now, is it one or maybe two? Starting out with one, yeah, one Thursday or Tuesday evening a month for three hours.
How many cases can you do in that one session monthly?
I think our goal is to do a case per hour. And, you know, I think we would add days as our, as the juvenile, we got to get our feet wet a little bit to see how many cases we can handle at a time. We're going to meet in the municipal courtroom, there's an actual jury deliberation room. So our plan is to bring a juvenile in, have, have the trial, read the police report, have the jury ask questions, put the, put the first six jurors in the deliberation room, bring out the next six and have another case going so that we've always got all the rooms working. I mean, all things considered, those police, the police reports generally won't be very long and with six people each at least asking two questions, I am hopeful that it will be a pretty smooth process.
So what do you use in terms of the censn, censn?
In terms of what?
The penalty.
Oh, okay, so what I just maybe mentioned earlier is there's, there's a homework packet that they will all have to do. And the homework packet is probably at least 10 pages long that goes over questions about, makes them read over things like the consequences of crimes, what the maximum penalties are. It has them write an essay about, you know, what, what they did wrong and how they can be better. And that's, that's one thing that they, everyone will have to do, that homework packet. And the homework packet, we've modeled after Kaiser's homework packet. Other things they would have to do is community service. They're all going to have to do community service. And I think it's at least three hours of community service that they're going to have to do. On top of that, the jury can ask that they do more hours depending on the severity of their crime. There are other classes that are offered in Albany and in Lebanon by Court Services Institute and NTSI. There's anger awareness class, there's a consumer awareness class for shoplifters, there's alcohol awareness for MIPs, and also PCS lesson, an ounce of marijuana, there's a class for that. I'm sure I'm missing things, but a sorry letter to Mom and Dad and, but it's not, they're not, none of these things are monetary. The only thing they have to pay is the initial $50 to the peer court.
Thank you.
I was getting volunteers. I know you were looking for volunteers. Have you gotten volunteers?
Yes. Well, so, you know, I've, I think Deila is handling that. I've passed them out. We have a cute girl that works at our front desk who's going to be a senior. And I've winked, wink, you know, I gave her about 10 applications. Deila is meeting with local church groups that have youth organizations and asking them to get groups together just to, to begin our jury pool. The other thing that Council Wieskamp asked, part of the sentence is that our, our juveniles have to do jury hours. That's part of their sentence. And Deila has worked with the, I don't, I'm not quite sure what her title is at the high school, but high schoolers have to have a certain number of volunteer hours in order to graduate. I think it's 40. And we have qualified peer court as part of that volunteer hour requirement. So there's some incentive for high schoolers who maybe need some community service or volunteer hours to come and be jurors.
Exciting program. I think it's great.
Yeah, I'm excited. I think it'll be fun.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Okay, entertain a motion for the peer court presentation, or peer court intergovernmental agreement.
I'd move approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded for the intergovernmental agreement for the peer court program. All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Going to have us take a quick 10-minute break and we'll get right back. Let's call the meeting to order. Back from recess, please. Okay, we're going to put number five on hold, the utility bill collection process results. Our city manager, John, needs to get out of town soon. Hopefully, it's not leaving, running from anything. And he's going to start with the ASME contract amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not being run out of town. I've got a flight to catch up in Portland, so I was worried that as we get close to 8:30, I need to exit and I wanted to make sure that, that I got through six, seven, and eight. So six is collective bargaining agreement amendment for your consideration. One of the clauses of the contract requires an opener. If insurance does increase, it was projected to increase. We currently have a cost-sharing agreement that calls for the city to pay 95% of the premium and the employees to pay 5% of the premium. So Dean Baugh, Debbie Schuman have met with Frank Frenzel, representing ASME, about some other alternative packages to consider that would be good for the employee as well as good for the city. And we did come up with a package that's before you and recommended for your approval and it provides for deductible increases on the health insurance piece to be raised from $250 to $500. And that results in a 0% increase in health insurance. There is no increase in dental insurance and there's a reduction in vision insurance. So this is one of those rare times, in my opinion, that you can come up with a package that's beneficial to the organization as well as to the, to the employees. We're recommending that it, council approve this amendment and it has been approved by ASME membership. Would answer any questions?
I would move for approval.
Was, hold on just one second. Was there any questions first? Just want to make sure. Okay. Wayne's moved for approval?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended ASME contract. Those, all those in favor? Say aye. Those opposed? Contract's passed.
Thank you.
Next up.
And I would, Frank is in the audience tonight and I would like to acknowledge Frank coming to the meeting as well as his work in explaining the package to the membership. So, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
And you did ask for seven.
Yes, yes, go ahead. The Economic Development Incentives Report.
And, economic development incentives report, as Mayor indicates, is the next item on the agenda. And this is just frankly, follow-up to the exercise that we went through with the LOES agreement in trying to capture all of the obligations that were frankly, not as apparent as they could be in terms of decision-making in the future. So part of that exercise was to pull in what we owed LOES for fill, what we owed for wetlands, what we owed for interest. And we came up with the $10 million payment that was just processed this week to, to end that obligation. In going through that exercise, we found that there were a lot of other incentive obligations that really haven't been captured the way they need to. So that when you make decisions on payback agreement amounts, you can also consider what the urban renewal district owes to utility funds, what the urban renewal district owes to systems development charges, what the, what the urban renewal district may owe as it's paid for development, building permit fees on behalf of, of good projects, but it just hasn't been collected in a way that is apparent and can have a real good staff review as well as a policy view of, okay, we've only got a limited amount of funds. How much should be paid for debt service, it's fixed. How much for overhead? How much for the payback agreements? How much for the incentives that are owed? And this collection of all of these obligations, which are significant and captured in the memorandum, are what staff are working on and will bring forward at a, at a later date. You see from the memorandum that there's over $1.2 million in systems development charges that is owed by the districts to the water fund, the sewer fund, the transportation systems development charge funds. And that needs to be captured and a payment schedule needs to be developed. Similarly, we are looking at utility fees and permit and review fees to put them on schedule so that they can be considered and paid and aren't put in a last position behind all the other obligations that the urban renewal districts have. We mentioned the other two big agreements that are out and pending for the urban renewal districts, the Marathon Agreement in the Cheetah Lake Urban Renewal District and then the North Gateway Samaritan Health Services Agreement has a line of credit for Samaritan Health Services for advanced payment on infrastructure work that they put in of up to $5.1 million. Right now, that obligation is less than $1 million, but we want it on the table on what the existing amount due is so that, again, you can make a weighted, informed decision on how you stack up what payments to make when budgets come around each year. If you do not do that, then you can get yourself in a position, in my opinion, where the ratepayers are starting to subsidize some of the capital projects that are needing to occur because of the growth needs facing the community. So you may run into some staff recommendations that say, "We need a payback agreement from, basically a loan agreement from a systems development charge fund to a utility fund because the utility ratepayers have fronted some of the growth required costs of the project." And that will frankly, help with your rate relief that you want to offer ratepayers into the future to, to get all that information collected and together. So I've talked about the need to have urban renewal district obligations transparent and in front of you so you can make informed decisions in the future. Noted that we're doing cap, Ron and Rob are doing cap or projects review and then we'll, we'll come up with numbers that need to be translated into payment schemes that Dean will have a part of deciding and making recommendations on how to pay for these obligations that are on the books but currently have not been, been paid. The last piece that I wanted to mention was the Northwest Urban Renewal District Plan Amendment. And there's been some confusion, in my opinion, on how, when you do a plan amendment, it cuts off your revenue, your tax increment revenue from that urban renewal district at its current level. So the Fourth Amendment, which was providing the money for the good project that LBCC is putting in, really capped that revenue stream at $2.7 million. If you do a Fifth Amendment, as has been discussed in the past, that would pay, provide money to pay the rest of the $300,000 balance due to the fire district, as agreed by the council, then heaven forbid, if that occurs at a time when, say, a LOES appeal is successful and lowers their assessed value rate, then you've frozen that tax increment financing revenue stream even lower than what it is right now. There are still people in the community that don't understand that the Fourth Amendment capped that revenue stream at $2.7 million. Anything in tax increment above $2.7 million gets shared by all of the, the taxing jurisdictions. There was, when I first got here, there were conversations about, no, the revenue stream, we think, is $4 million from that, from the, from the tax increment associated with the Northwest Urban Renewal District. It's not. It's at 2.7 and you don't want to have it go down any lower because you've got $2 million alone in debt service and then you've got a little bit of extra for the payback agreements, what that fund owes, other city funds, and overhead charges that are being made. So you really want to hold off on this Fifth Amendment until at least you get through LOES and then be very careful if you still decide to proceed with the Fifth Amendment so you know what the, what the ramifications are to, to the revenue stream. Information report, I'll stop there and answer questions.
John, does that, when does that expire?
The Northwest-
Oh, the, the cap?
It doesn't. That was something that was presented, again, through, through the legislature by other taxing jurisdictions because they didn't like the fact that some of the urban renewal districts, while meant to be of a defined period, were going on in perpetuity and that revenue wasn't being shared. So they came up with this statute that requires if an amendment is made to add more projects into the district, then that caps it at the current level of when the amendment passes, caps the revenue stream. And above that, it gets shared with all the taxing jurisdictions.
So with the Northwest Urban Renewal District, with Samaritans' continued capital improvement in their projects, then there, it looks to me like there's not infrastructure money in there.
You know, it's, Wayne, it's separate. The Northwest URD is separate. The Samaritan Health Services is part of the North Gate Urban Renewal District. And so that one, the issue there for me in the future will be to, and again, Samaritan Health Services projects, the university project, the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs projects, great projects. We need some tax-paying projects in that urban renewal district like the hotel that will start to generate that tax increment to pay off the obligations.
Exactly.
John, I just want to thank you for bringing this together so that we have it all succinctly in, in one location that we can look at it and make decisions. We haven't seen anything like this ever. So this, this is very, very helpful and I really appreciate the work you put into this.
Well, that's nice you just-
It's going to set up for our new city manager and make it a little bit easier for him also to understand everything as he comes right in, so.
It's, it's very complex.
Yeah, thanks a lot, John.
Thank you.
We appreciate the information, that's for sure.
Yeah. Okay, number eight, city manager report.
And this is the July city manager report. Again, thanks to the department managers for the good information that they provide in the reports. Jamie Blue also does a great job of formatting it for us. Couple of highlights that I wanted to mention, I just mentioned this, and that is that Dean did make the wire transfer to LOES for the $10 million payment to, in our opinion, end the economic development agreement obligations that the city has to LOES. So that is, has been completed. Just for your information, the September 11th taxable value appeal is still scheduled in Salem and we continue to work with, with Lynn County on that, on that appeal to put our best foot forward. I was very impressed in the report with the work by Park Staff on Gil's Landing, to the point where I went down there and drove through. And revenue for Gil's Landing has gone from $1,400 per year to almost $60,000 per year.
I didn't think that could generate that kind of revenue.
Yeah, and you go down there and it is a beautiful, beautiful park. I can see why, I can see why it's used. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very impressive. So I wanted to highlight that. Again, I mentioned previously the, the good information in the packet from the department managers. And my last comment before we go back to item five on the, on the agenda is just to share with you that this is my last meeting- you that this is my last meeting with you as your interim city manager. I have really, really enjoyed working with you all. I've also really enjoyed working with city staff. I will be pleased to share with Dana, and I'll carve out a few hours of his time when he comes that week of August 26th, but not every day do you see such a collegial, what's best for the community approach to conversation and policy direction that is occurring at this level, and it's very, very encouraging and very rewarding. It's been neat to be a part of it for these past several months, and I've really, really enjoyed working with the professional staff that you have in the organization. They're raring to go to do good things for a lot of years for the city, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, and we really appreciate your time and your retirement and taking the time out to help us, and it's helped us a lot, and I think it's really, like I said, it's given us a bridge so that our new city manager is just going to be able to come in and take right over, and we just really appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I haven't heard a bad word, John.
Well, that...
I think you've done a great job.
Well, that's very nice, Bob.
I appreciate it.
That's very nice.
We're confident that you could have generated some in time.
Yeah, that's all I needed, was a little more time. I could have gotten you there, so, no, it's very, it was just a good experience. I appreciated the opportunity. I'm not done yet. I'm going to wreak havoc next week, and then I'll be done.
We'll take advantage of that. Okay. Anybody else? Next up will be the Utility Bill Collection Process Survey Results, Dean Baugh, Finance Manager. And I won't call you Walt, so just to...
Oh, Walter. Good. So, before I start, I'd like to thank the staff, so, to give us all out there and get it, you know, getting it organized, helping us with the survey, they've done a great job getting it together, and totally did it for us, so, we couldn't have done it without their side, so I appreciate that. So, what I had here tonight was an updated memo. You know, the first part is pretty much the same as it was last time. Here's what our current procedures are. This is the second, is the new proposed process, and we have made some changes based on the survey we received. When you go through the survey, all the numbers, if you look at all the graph pages, it's interesting, all those, except for the first one, support what we're proposing in our proposal policy. You know, get rid of that, the door hangers, change the interest rates to the, that picks up just the statistics, and not just 50/50, you know, it's overwhelmingly involved with the project. Your one was different, it's the first one, it's how many days it raised to the jail, and it went from one day to 10, five days to 10 days, and it was like, a third of the people said five, two-thirds said 10. I think if we would have put 50 days on, then two-thirds would have said 50. So, so it's pretty good, this supports what we're trying to do, and updates and changes the policy. So, there's a lot of good comments in there, I haven't been read them all, you know, some I think is made, so, but there are some good ideas that you can look at and pull out of this, about different ways to handle the deposits, you know, and we've thought about this before, because a $200 deposit or a $300 deposit is pretty hard, and we've thought about how do we spread it out, and also we have a suggestion about maybe do it over a couple of months, you know, so, there are some good ideas when you start going through and clean out, good ideas out of the verbiage here where people look. So, this is something we'll use a little more in the future, if we go through it, if you have the good ideas and apply them to the system. What we're looking at in the change in the policy from the last time when we first brought it to you, is in the, you know, the first line is the same, first, the bills are due on the first of the month, you know, the first we see, maybe you should develop that. Then, the bill becomes passed due on the 15th. From then down, the whole process, the proposal changed. We're saying after the 15th, approximately five days, so by the 20th of the month, any bills that aren't paid will be assessed the penalty. Now, here's a caveat, because we can't do this, what we're, I want to say, what we're actually proposing is, we would say the 20th is your cutoff, but what we're not going to do is, we won't apply the penalty until we start processing the bill. The bills are processed somewhere between the 18th and the 23rd or 24th of the month. So if Teresa doesn't say process the bills until the 24th, it's when she pushes that button, that will also generate the penalty. So they can have anywhere from five days to eight or nine days, depends on where the statute says. But we haven't set a date of, you know, five days, because if you say, well, it's kind of out here, then we will be fighting with everybody, well, last month it was a 10, this month it was a 12, that month it was a 12. We'll have to compensate, so it's by the 20th, with the penalty applied, but more likely there'll be a few extra days on that, so, yeah, we won't do it until bills actually process. And then the penalty will be put on your bill. We're proposing eliminating the link notice and the door hanger, so we won't set out either, because when we do the timing here, there's no time to get a link notice out before the next bill is sent, so, we're going to add it all and let it on the bill. So, here's the proposed language for all the next bill. It still needs a little tweaking to make sure we get it exactly right how we run that. This will be on next month's council meeting, we'll actually bring this back to the resolution to finish it. We also, if you kind of agree with this process, we need an update to the fees table, because the fees table has five dollars at 2, at 5.4 percent, we're putting on here five dollars at 2 percent, since we're not sending out letters, that reduces our cost of the link notice. So, with this, it should actually make a lot of folks penalties down, both $10. So, so we're looking at changing that also, lowering that, so what we propose. One thing we're looking at is, if the council agrees with this, and the next month we finish back and we okay this policy, it's going to be about four months before we actually pick them up. Because we're going to have to send out letters, we're going to have to write red flags in the next couple of months, bills, so we're looking to spend, well, we have to $5,000 to advertise what we're doing here, to get it out, because it's going to be a big change of people, and they don't get that link notice or the door hanger. I look at the first month we do this, we're going to have 100 or more shut offs, more than we ever had, and they're all going to be yelling because they didn't get that door hanger, saying, wait, I didn't get a hanger. But, I think, if we change the policy last year, people find it worked, and we got it. Took four months last time to get through the process. So we're looking, we're standing here, that's sending out a lot of notices, getting it on our website, like I say, mail a lot to all of our customers, noticing all the bills, we'll put notices on the bills, you know, hopefully it'll make some newspaper coverage on this, we did last time, you know, on the change in, we're going to, you know, blitz out, everybody's delayed, no, it's just a change, you won't see these other notices, and we're eliminating some of the fees, and hopefully, for a lot of folks, reducing the fees.
You know, in a staff discussion, if I may jump in, and Dean, maybe you could explain this a little bit, because it does relate to that five days. If we look at the past due going out greater than that five days, we can find ourselves in a situation where people would have three months or almost $500 worth of past due to try to clean up by the time they get their water shut off, and that's just almost overwhelming for people in dire circumstances to come up with that funding from themselves, from relatives, from good works agencies to address. So that was also a part of the, looking at that five-day pass due requirement.
What John's looking at, I looked at the 10 days. Well, if we go 10 days to the 15th, back to the 25th, the bill's already printed, so there's no way you can do the penalty, so then we got the next month, and then also you've got this one, you've got three kinds of bills that are not free there, that they don't necessarily pay, so we put them in shut off. So that was the problem, actually, around 10 days, unless we change our code and move the due date from the 15th back and really change the whole process, but that could really mess anybody up. So that's what John was mentioning, is if the 10 days put us past, when the bills are processed, and we're usually going to have them processed by about the 25th, so they hit into the mail, and they're usually in the box by the first of the truck.
I like these, I think these are a little more citizen-friendly, you know, the residents, I think, will appreciate that little extra, and the door hangers saves us some money and all that staff time that, how many hours do they spend a month on putting those out?
It takes about half a day or a half, and then they stuff all the other.
No, I meant the actual door hangers.
Door hangers, it usually takes, Hundredbrook usually puts like three guys on, and they can pick anywhere from two days, depends on the number.
Wow.
To get them out there. So, once we switch this, I've talked about the Works Bros., and we've talked about this for years, we want to take the time they did door hangers and possibly move it back to the other side and have them in the metering. Hundredbrook's really likes that, and that gets $30,000 out of their, of cost out of their bill.
Wow.
Because that's what we're taking to contact the meters. And it doesn't cost them more time, they're just going to move the guys from one side of the building to the other side of the building, and they like it because they can see maintenance problems better, they can see a lot of items they need to work on. We do get maintenance lessons from the meter readers, but it's not always right. We always send our guys out after meter readings as a...
Have a safe trip.
Yep, thank you. You know, we get lessons from the meter readers, so there's a lot, this will be a good thing for us, if we do this and move time, pull it in-house, because they'll be able to get a lot of work, and so, and we usually get a lot of re-reach too, because, you know, this guy arrives by and does it, but a lot of things will, like, use my hundred, because a meter will roll over some, so we send out at least one or three re-reaches, I mean, they're still using, are managed to read meters and well, use that, so, they like that. And it would take a while to get that in place, but then if they break that, we'll have to do that. And one thing I'd also like to do when we move over those advertising, we're going to push for the other methods of paying your bill, because that was kind of, if you read the last part, it was interesting how people pay their bills.
It was, and you know, honestly, I will admit, I did not know you could pay online.
You did?
I did not know that, no, not until I read this survey.
And there was one comment here saying, can't we make it free to pay online? We don't charge.
Yeah.
You can walk for a website, and it doesn't cost you anything.
Yeah, I'm going to start using that.
I'm not sure where they're, who they're paying, because they're not paying us, and they're not paying our third-party administrator, so, I don't know what they're talking about. Because we do not charge, but if you use, go to the city's website and use our internal where we do it, it doesn't cost. So, we're not going to make a big push for the direct deposit or online stuff.
Beans were on billing, and you mentioned deposits.
Mm-hmm.
I think we had a discussion the other day, and if I understand this, and correct me if I misunderstood, that a deposit is kept as long as someone rents a property?
If somebody is renting, yes, the deposit is kept until they close their account. Because we had a big issue with renters disappearing in the middle of the night, the landlord then gets stuck with the past due bills. At least this way we have a deposit there. First, what we do is recharge a $200 deposit for anybody who moves in, unless you've got a bad issue with the city. If you've ever contacted the city before and you've been through our collection process or you look and go, hey, we're delaying the refund, then the deposit is $300. For a homeowner, they can either pay the deposit, or they can request a credit check, and we'll leave that. You know, said that goes onto their, onto the cost of the lien goes against their home, with exception of the homeowner, they can sell the home or whatever. But for a renter, yes, we do, we probably keep that. And there comes a lot of some renters who jump on rental, 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 when they move out of rental A and move into rental B, we don't transfer the deposit from one to the other, so that account is closed. So then they have to turn our deposit here, have to pay it over here, until they finalize that account. Because it's happened in the past where they moved from here to here, and they never paid that bill, and so that last landlord is stuck with the bill against his home. So the deposit stays there until that account is finalized, then it's moved into that account, and it just goes on and on. Yes.
And do homeowners ever get it back?
Oh, I'm sorry, homeowners, if they pay the $200, if they have 12 months of note, you know, a good history note, notice, they get it back. Or, like I said, if they can pay $20 and get a credit check and not pay it, and we have a lot of us who do that. And what we look at on a credit check, is some people will say, I just bought a house, I've got a credit score, you know, 10 million, I'm a wonderful person, I don't care. I look at your thing and say, oh, look, you were late on two different bills, more than 30 days, I want to, I want to get a deposit. So if I look at them and says, 30 days, have one late, 30 days, they have one late, that's a deposit, if they, if they were late on just one bill for a credit card one time, I don't care, but if there's two, then they're going to get a deposit. And then that's if they get it back in 12 months.
I just have a problem tying up someone's money for, if they rented for 20 years, tying that money up for 20 years. I don't know, does anybody else feel that way? Because in a way, if we're doing it to protect a homeowner, a homeowner has a lot more at risk than that water bill. I mean, if I, if I'm going to rent my home to this person, that person could punch holes in my sheet rock and tear my carpeting out and everything else, so I...
That's why they have their deposit.
Right, but there, there is a, that deposit may not even cover that kind of damage. And so I guess there's a, there's a point, if someone is renting a house from me, and if a year satisfies a homeowner, I don't have a problem with that matching somewhat with a renter personally, because then the, we're going to get our money regardless. We'll lean the property, whatever it takes.
We lean the property, but there are some properties that we have out there that have got lots and lots of lees on them, and people notice that, because by the time they sell that property, it's worn out, it's not worth anything, and you just won't get anything. And we have quite a few. Now, that's something that, that's an extreme project out there, is to say, any of these lees that are so old, they just stopped being paid, what about these old? Because you have a whole bunch of those just sitting out there, and some of these landlords, yeah, because they're not doing the maintenance on property, so it's, then, they wore it out.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess I'd like to hear from other councilors. I've got a neighbor who's a great person, has a $200 deposit tied up for years and years and years and years, and to me, it seems kind of punitive.
Well, I'm sort of, I hear your thoughts, but how many of those, 10, 15, 20 years, 17? I don't know. If it's that long, then, I don't know.
But there are no other utilities that I'm aware of, you know, power company, you get it back in a year or whatever, gas, I'm not aware of other utilities that tie up funds indefinitely.
Well, you're thinking we should treat one-year rentals the same as a one-year home.
Well, if it's, if it's to prove a track record of payment, I think that's, if that establishes it with a homeowner, I don't know why it doesn't with a renter. And like I say, beyond that, and even a $200 deposit, if we're talking about, it isn't keep us totally immune, if they run up a $500 water bill really quickly and we have $200 to attach, we still are going to have to go up to $300, so, it doesn't really take us out of the same process, but it just seems really excessive and punitive to me.
That seems somewhat reasonable, I think, a year of, of good payment, you know, if someone turns around in a year and a half and does it, and I guess that's just the way it is, but it does seem like a year's enough of a payment, that if they're going to mess up, they're probably going to do it in the first few months anyways.
Yeah, and after that, if the homeowner is cool, knowing that that's a risk, along with the rest of the property that they own, why should we care?
But a lot of the property management homeowners like the way to do it, because they are protected. And like I said, if somebody does $10,000 damage, I just feel bad to say, well, we're also going to add on a $400 water bill, you know, the damage that you owe us now, because, you know, and then, I'm paying $700 to fix the house because they're shorting the dirt and the walls, we're just adding some of the injury to that for the home.
And I could certainly see a landlord adding a $250, $200 water deposit too, to make, you know, if we change the billing, because, I mean, I think that is the issue. the issue, um, of the landlord getting stuck with it no matter what. Because, you know, it may go good for 24 months and then the landlord and the tenant have a falling out over something, a pet, anything that can happen. And you don't want the landlord walking out, "Well, you know, heck with you. You can, you pay the water bill."
Do landlords get stuck with other utilities and services, you know?
Yeah, I was actually thinking that same question. I, I don't know. They, they certainly individually get stuck with them, but I don't know if, I don't think that private utilities, the utilities can go to the same, uh, lien rights as the city.
Yeah, because the special thing to, to the IRS is that we can lean property for water sort of.
You know, and I'm not speaking from a lack of exposure. I, I rent a commercial building. If they leave, I'm stuck with that bill. I don't have a deposit against it. But I, it's, rental is a form of a business, in a sense. There's a certain amount of risk. And I just, I, I guess I'd almost feel better if a rent, if a, if a landlord felt that level of trust that they charge it, not us. I just think that as a municipality, tying up somebody's money for 20 years, if that's the case, seems punitive.
You make a good point, boy. I can't argue with your logic.
We are, but-
Dean, how many thousands of dollars do we have of that?
In deposits for?
In deposits for, uh, long-time renters.
I could pay them for long-term renters.
I mean, I think we could certainly-
It might be interesting to know how much money was, is tied up in people that have cleared a 12, a 12-month hurdle.
Yeah. I, I think, I think, I mean, I, I think you're right. It is a little off-topic, but certainly this council could put that on as an agenda item and discuss it and have public notice. And people may, may get some renters in here to talk about it.
Yeah, it's, well, just as a matter of interest, it'd be interesting to know for future reference, um, you know, how much deposit money are we holding for renters who have cleared a 12-month hurdle, have been, have 12-month good history?
Yeah, it is off-topic.
It'd be interesting to know.
But I don't wanna keep-
If it's not a big number, then let's not worry about it. It's-
I don't wanna keep opening this subject up. I'd like to get some closure on it.
Let's, let's do that. Let's have-
We could always get more information and put it on the city manager's report.
Yeah, then we can discuss that further.
I mean, I'd like to someday, you know, since we're talking about extraneous items, you know, revisit things like standby water rates and a few things like that. I mean, that topic's not dead in my mind yet either, so that's nice for tonight.
Let's definitely not go there tonight. Okay. So back to these proposed procedures. Um, I like the changes. I really like the amount of people that we got in the, uh, survey. Was it 50?
No, it was 107.
107. I, I was pretty impressed with that, because normally we don't get that kind of response. And it wasn't just all bashing. I mean, it was, there were some actually good comments in there, when you pulled some of them out. And-
At this point, if you look at 107, of 107 of a number of customers, that's less than 1/10th or 1% of our customer base.
Yeah.
All numbers based on all of our customers we do have.
Yeah.
Well, it is, but again, look at how many people come to city council meetings, you know, out of our population. So I mean, it's, just to get a few is, is good.
They're watching it on YouTube.
That's right, they are. Yeah. Um, so why don't we look at, uh, do we have, do we want more discussion on this topic, or are you comfortable with this?
I'm good.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
No, he's gotta bring it back.
Oh, you're gonna, okay. Oh, that's right, we're just in discussion right now. Okay.
We'll bring back the resolution that next month's meeting.
Okay.
And I'll also add on that, uh, that's like that.
And Wayne, I didn't get-
Bring it back next month.
And Wayne, are you okay with, you okay with, okay. Okay, so the direction from the council then is to go ahead and go forward with this and bring it back.
So you like the changes with, uh, timing, uh, different, different rates and-
Yeah, and I appreciate your guys' work on this.
Good job, Dean.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Items from the council. Any councilors have anything? I just have a couple of things.
Yeah, I have one thing, yeah. And I don't know exactly how we, uh, go to press with it, our news release, but there seems to be, uh, every summer about this time, uh, because I spend a lot of time at Cheetah Lake, uh, a lot of citizens complain about or hear about contamination of the water in the lake and stuff's been dumped in there for years and years. Uh, how we, you know, we've done a number of tests and all that, and we have results that says that it's, you know, environmentally it's sound. Um, so maybe once a year, we need to, uh, say something in the press, uh, about the fact that the water is, uh, safe. It's a fishery and people fish and eat it, eat the fish. And, uh, but it, up and down Main Street and coffee shops and stuff, that gets out every, seems like every year about this time.
Interesting.
About, uh, well, I worked at the mill 30 years ago and we were dumping batteries and tires. And then people hear this and they start asking questions and they'll even drive out to the park and ask me. Uh, I don't know how we satisfy, uh, you know, the concern, but that's been brought to my attention every summer now for some time.
I wonder, um, I had talked to John and as we were working with the, um, uh, the communications plan, we were talking about putting out a water report yearly. And I'm wondering if, if Cheetah Lake could be included in that, um, something for the public that was, that we're not really getting, but something of a little brochure, online, things like that. And then we could maybe include Cheetah Lake with that. That would be, because that would make sense. I had a constituent contact us from, uh, the medical college, the new student coming in. And the new student was concerned that she had heard that, uh, our groundwater was contaminated. And, and it was real serious. And it was apparently from somebody from CH2N, I believe. I, I'm not exactly sure who it was. But apparently it was somebody that had some authority that kind of knew about the water. And it was completely wrong, uh, the information that she had. Um, I gave it to John and John took care of it with staff and, and that was all, um, taken care of. But it was, it was just one of those things. You get one person like that and they, they say something that's erroneous and, and everybody thinks it's truth. And I could see that happening with the Cheetah Lake. Maybe the Lebanon Express could do a little special on that and help you out. At least for now, and then get, get the publicity out for the, especially for the summer. Wayne, do you have a report on that?
City Hall has, uh, the results of the last testing that was done. I don't personally know.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Maybe something could be put on one of those little reader things out there at the lake itself, too, that says-
Are waters safe?
Well, you know, although this was an industrial site for many years, it reached, I, I remember the, the, the report. It seems like it was cleaner than the river.
Yeah.
Um, and I thought, wow, I mean, that's pretty amazing. Uh, but yeah, we had a, we went over that quite thoroughly before we accepted ownership of the thing, because we didn't want an environmental cleanup deal. And the Ferris Brothers had done, uh, a lot of-
Extensive test.
Yeah, extensive, uh, testing on it, uh, on a number of levels. And I was absolutely surprised at how high it rated. I thought, I was hoping for passing, but I, I felt it was better than that.
Wow. You know, maybe the foundation could put that on their website, too. Put the report results on there. Could refer people to that. Possible? Just thought. Anything else? Um, I just wanted to, to mention, uh, Bill Thomas's passing. I'm sure many of you may have known him. Um, I didn't know him personally. I just, uh, inspirational man. And, um, sorry to, to see him go and his family. And our thoughts and prayers are, are with his family and friends and coworkers that worked at the firm. Um, Dana Levak, our new city manager, will be moving in next week. He'll be coming in the end of the week. He'll be moving in his new house. And, uh, him and his wife will be here soon. And he'll be starting on the 26th, Monday. So, excited about that. And I had a thank you to John, but he's already gone. So, uh, he's just done some incredible things for us. And it's just, uh, it's really hard to see him go. I was hoping he was gonna stay. So, that's all I have. And lastly, we have public comments. Was there any public comments?
I lied to you. I'm working the politics. It's all, it's a good getaway.
You made my day, Bill.
I have water living, all that. So, I think the council did very good on talking with this gentleman about the new water point. One question I had, he let them pick the plant that they tore. That's just like the fox getting in the chicken house and say, "Okay, this is the chicken you can have." I don't think that, it was a very good idea. They should have picked one of the sites that they had built and went in on the road instead of asking them, "You picked the site for us to look at."
Well, I think that with any business, when you create a product or you have a facility that you've built, I would think that if you're gonna show off your best work, that's just part of business.
Well, yeah, but still, I worked the trade for many years and I worked for the government. Unfortunately, the trade for many years. And, you know, we, I just said, "Hey, there's gotta be something fishy here that there's plenty of business to do on it." And I also agree with you about John. I had a personal discussion with him. And, uh, he didn't have as, plus my sawed-off, uh, abjus, uh, anything to talk about. And the impression I gave him when he was talking about how to get your books straightened out.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know about the previous part of it, but the impression I got when he was discussing that, that the previous administrator wasn't doing the city right by the way he invited them on keeping their books. I could just deal with colleagues that have borrowed money to pay for the colleagues that quote-unquote "we've got on the boat," or this money's that they have to borrow from loan. And Jessica, she probably double-dips me the next time I see her, because she's my attorney. Like I said before, I'm the old school. We did something, we paid the prices. It was none of this laughing our hands and saying, "Now, you're gonna stand in the corner, Johnny." And like I said the last one, the gentleman was talking about the cops, like they're taking care of business. We had that shootout in my neighborhood. The director, one of them was still on the street. They've got more rights than you and I do. So, like I say, I'm from the old school when it comes to, and from where I lived there, Century Park is to the south of me. And I think a lot of them kids over there, for their parents' old guides, it's something that got in the way when their parents was having fun and the actor effects, they could care less about taking care of them. Need to get a hold of the parents who teach them something. So, that's all my two cents tonight.
Thank you.
I'm a politician. I like to, I'm gonna tell you that. But when he said that they picked the structure for them to go through, uh, to me, that threw up a red flag.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Any other comments? Sure, come on up. We sign in there. Oh, few of it, please?
My name's Bill Green. And I talked to Paul the other day on the phone about our billings for our water bills and our concerns about it. Okay? Um, you know, we got our bill on the second or third, whenever we got it. And then we pay the $10 late fee, like you're supposed to. And then on the 24th, um, my wife, or on the 25th, my wife paid the, um, bill online at 6 o'clock in the morning, when she gets, she, she gets up that time. Anyway, so I watched the guy walk up and throw the door hanger on the door. And it concerned me because I didn't know when the bill was due and when they put the late fee or the door hanger on the door. But I went down to City Hall, the, the water department, and said, you know, I go up to the door and I go, "You know, they put this late fee on, or this door hanger on my door and they charged me 15 bucks and my wife has already paid it." I watched the guy come up and put it on at 7 o'clock. Okay? So my concerns are, is they charged me 15 bucks for that and I'd already paid it. How can they, how can they actually do that legally? Is it legal? Does anybody know?
Well, I'd have to pull out the policy. And if the policy that's been adopted by the city provides for it, then it's legal. Now, I, I'm not sure what the resolution you got working through the system and trying to talk to Paul and talk to the water people. And maybe Dean can give you some more answers. Um, but it seems to me that, you know, if it's late, obviously, if you depaid it at 6:00 AM in the morning, I'm not sure that that is going to register before the list of people that are gonna be, get the door hangers at 7. I mean, there's, I mean, I don't think you should think that they would have known that at 7 o'clock.
I completely understand that. But when I, when I run credit, I had a million-two on my books and I run credit. If I would have done it that way, there's no way I could have charged that guy any dollars if he paid it before he got that in his hand. Any kind of ticket.
I, I mean, I think it's a pretty unique situation, but I don't know the exact answer for you.
Well, you know, and again, you know, that floating day that it can happen, because my wife pays it every month on the 25th. Every month on the 25th. And you can look at my records. I told Paul to look at it. You know, we pay it on the 25th because we get paid on the 10th and the 25th. How many people get paid on the 25th and pay their bills? I mean, because you gotta budget. Everybody budgets. You know, I mean, seriously, who doesn't? You know, you pay certain bills on the 10th. I don't go through and pay bills seven times a month, eight times a month. We pay it on the 10th and the 25th. What's the consideration on that? You know, you're talking about people consistently paying. Why should they be penalized? You know, here, we're getting penalized for paying, even though, you know, we choose to pay it on the 25th out of that paycheck. But if you look at our pay schedule, it's always on the 25th. You know, but I got penalized because in that month, it happened to be shorter one day. And I, I really, I really don't think that's right, that, you know, that you should have a fluctuating day on when you get cut off and you get charged $15. I mean, it should be, okay, here's the 25th or here's the 26th. I mean, our account's receivable. We always run it on the 20, it was the 27th of the month. That you were considered late and you got the late fee. Okay? We've, we've actually, as a company, switched it to the end of the month. And I know that you don't, nobody has to do that, but there's companies working with that because they know that people get paid on the 20, 10th and the 25th. There are so many companies that pay like that. But it was just kind of weird, you know, you go down to City Hall or go down to the water department. And I've heard this comment before. I went in there and asked her, "Who do I talk to?" "Well, I don't know. Talk to the mayor. He's the only one that can deal with it." I think the reason that you didn't get as many people commenting on there is because they've been down there and it sounds like nobody really cares. And what good is it gonna do if you make a comment? You know, are they just taking these comments and throwing it in their little file, or are they really gonna use it?
Take your time, son.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean, would you like to take a minute to respond, or?
Got some valid points. Really do.
You know, when I look at the account, all I can assume is that, like I was saying before, it pays three days for door hangers. So we might give these guys the door hangers on the 23rd. They don't get them all hung until the 26th, because they fix a couple days. Well, we apply the penalties, we give the guys the door hangers. So you may have not, you may have paid and the, the door hangers aren't down to build some places. It's, it's gonna hide that. That, you, you may have paid. You know, a lot of people say, "God, man, I see the guy come down the road. I'm gonna run in and pay that." pay that." It's too late, you already got the fee, you can't, you can't beat the guy this way.
Okay, well, and-
And half the time, you've been, if somebody's got three days, that turns out already.
And after our discussion, if we go forward with this, we're not gonna have the door hangers anyway, so that's gonna eliminate that.
Next month, or four months, whenever you pick the bottom of that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Any other citizen comments? Okay, with that, meetings adjourned.